All right, well. So going back to you all, like, how do you feel after two weeks? It's been a while, you know, you. Did you get some rest and then did you have time to kind of look at? Everything that we've got going on? Did you want to organize? And did you want to like start with chapter five again?
Yes.
For organizing this, yeah, chapter five would be good. Like I said before, if we can. Go a little bit faster in the part two of the book because it's a lot more. Bigger chapters and a lot more theory, we can focus on things which are. It's mostly nice to know things and good to know things which would help us in system design, so we can. Yeah. Probably maybe one chapter a month, I don't know what's the pace we wanted to target. That would be great.
Yeah, I think that's that's perfect. One chapter a month is actually really good. So I think we can definitely knock that out for this. Book and I think, let's see, how many do we have left? So. Six, seven, eight.
Hello folks.
Hey, Amulya.
Hey. You know, we are trying to discuss like how. Hi guys. Um, no, so uh, there is a question that like, how how soon should we finish the book? Is that the?
Not how soon, but like.
Answering.
It's more like, um, what pace should we be going at?
What is the pace? That's the question, right? That Ramya was talking about.
Right. So what, one chapter a month?
Right, um.
With twelve chapters, I mean, not sure.
I mean, what is? What is the need for such? What at our own pace? Uh, references, it's. To.
Yeah.
Take our time, go through the references and understand, right? I mean, I, we don't have to set a specific pace, but up to, but what do you guys think?
Um, I mean, not exactly specific case. Uh, maybe one more pass on the same thing will be very good, Amulya. Then spend, I mean, of course, we need to spend the required amount of time on each chapter. But one more pass right on it will kind of help us to remember plus kind of. Uh, go, go through practical things much more faster than however we are going through.
Got it. Got it, but I mean, they could be there to different uh, questions, right? Yeah, we should do second pass, maybe even third pass. Yeah.
But uh, the more we do, we get more comfortable talking about these, right?
Of course, yeah. Um, and that's actually the goal, right? Like you.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, let's see, I mean, I don't think we are, we need to answer that.
Yeah, I mean, like, the goal is actually to feel really comfortable about. You know, and I think, um. You know, Karthik read this book, like, I think fourteen times or something like that, that's what he told me. You know, throughout his career, so. It, you know, I think it shows because whenever we ask him questions about this stuff, he seems to really know. So, I mean. That's the kind of like, you know, I don't know, like, if I can read a book fourteen times, but I would like to at least. Have his confidence, you know?
Yeah, I think uh, maybe with couple of passes. It's out there, we will not have a, you know, black face when you're talking about like things like what's replication, what is it? I mean, although you're not like, just because we are familiar with that, we will be able to speak something. But uh, um. I think main takeaway for us should be to understand the ideas behind problems. Like ideas that can be adopted, I think that's what we will do, use in our like, you know, day to day work, correct?
Right.
Yeah, I think uh. For that, we need to kind of understand why certain approach was taken. We might not understand it in the first read, first, you know, first read, so that's why we, yeah, I mean. I don't know if I'm answering that question, whether we need to set a pace. Uh, I think whatever pace is, is. I mean, I don't like the idea of stressing out before uh. Before the meeting, we, I think everybody has enough stresses already. So we should kind of do it. At whatever pace suits, suits us and whatever we could complete is good enough. I mean, as long as we are able to keep the meeting going.
Okay.
I, I mean, that's my takeaway, but yeah. That's my point.
What do you think, Ramya?
Uh, that's okay, uh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, then we don't really need to worry about the pace.
Yeah, I mean, let's see, uh, that some chapters we will, I think this chapter, actually, when I read today, I was reading it. It's easy, it's not so difficult.
Yeah. I felt that way too, actually.
Yeah.
Um.
Just that, um, maybe we should have some realistic goals.
Who's going to talk? I actually read it. Um, but yeah, if Ramya wants to talk, that's fine, but I can also talk. Uh, I heard after, it's actually not very difficult, uh, it's kind of. Intuitive if you read it, like you kind of understand it very easily.
Yeah, uh, no, I, I agree with you, um, we can pick anybody to read. Um, I think, did something, did Sudha, did you say something? I wasn't sure, I heard like a lot of people talk at the same time.
I agree with Amulya, just that I wanted to say, um, having certain, what do you say, say a month or so? Eight, uh, we meet almost close to eight hours, right? If it is a month. So at least, okay, but we have the other book also by month, right? Okay.
I was gonna ask about that, are we going to talk about that other book as well? Cause um. This is the other one we started looking at.
That's for Friday, right?
Yeah, I was, I was thinking, if we are spending eight hours, I think we should be able to. Uh, at least get to something out of a chapter. Uh, that, I just, no, 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 it's actually eight hours, right?
Um.
Per month, but four hours goes into the other one.
Okay, so. As far as the schedule, do you want to do Friday, this book, and then the other book Wednesday?
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, that sounds good. Alternate Fridays, I may be out, but I look into that according whenever I can join on Fridays.
Okay. So then we'll go with this, um. We'll start this book as well, I think it's actually a good idea. Because um, I see. Some of you like on LinkedIn talking about it. And then I feel like I always, now that like everybody likes Alex Shu. I always see his posts like on LinkedIn, so I kind of feel like, okay. Maybe I should. Catch up to whatever he's talking about as well.
And moreover, if we're going through the second pass for the DDI book, going through the system design book by Alex, who may, might help. Because maybe some concepts, we might not have understood in a way practically it needs to be. So going back and rereading that section would be a right way to. Uh, probably take multiple passes in the book.
Right, 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 okay. All right, good. Okay, so today we'll read chapter five and then tomorrow or Friday, we'll go ahead and start looking at chapter one. Scale. And I think, uh. You know, we'll just continue, um. At the pace that we're always kind of going at, I don't know, let's see here.
Hey, I put up a calendar, right? The notion calendar, um, can we just follow that so people can just refer to it when they want to just, you know, um. Uh, attend on one of, one of class. So basically, one to three, right? In that system, Alex's book. Um, it is gen, it's basically a repeat of what we are, what we are reading in this DDI book. So I think, and it's also very written in a very capsule format, so it's, it doesn't even take a lot of time. We can just read that independently and try to solve those problems in our meeting.
Okay, so you have a calendar in here, is that?
No, not, not in this one, can, can you go back to the notion, there's another calendar link that you should see. Or I, did I share it in the WhatsApp? Um, I don't know if you can. I think I shared it in the WhatsApp, let me.
Yeah, I remember seeing that.
Yeah.
Was it recently?
The, the first three chapters are really simple, you know, we can just read it by ourselves, not, we don't have to go through reading again.
I think. Okay.
But yeah, up.
This one?
This one, yes.
Oh, wonderful, okay.
So I just, I didn't, we will fill it up as we go, you know, uh, depending upon the progress we are making. But the eighth, the, for the fifth Friday, I had set it up as rate limiter design question. Um, we can, uh, you know, the rate limiter, uh, we can just interview each other, like whoever wants to go. We can all come prepared, um, and you know, whoever wants to talk, they can talk. Um, and we can actually go through the textbook reference like in the next class, so we know what we missed and stuff. How, what do you think?
Yeah, this is great, this is actually super cool.
I didn't write anything, but we can add, it's, it's, anybody can add it, I added, gave you guys the, uh, any permission, so.
Yeah, this is exactly what we need. Um, okay, so I think, is there a way to like, um. Just copy and paste here?
You just click on that and add it, yeah, click on that, plus, uh, yeah. Um, thing, there was a way, I had created a template. Let me see, I forgot, it's been quite a while, quite a while, um, but I'll add it, add to it when I. Um, when I have my computer.
Okay, um. Well, for the most part, right, like what I was thinking was, let's just keep going, um, as far as a goal. Um, I think like we can probably get through chapter five, six. And seven by September and then maybe a couple of Alex's shoes stuff. Um, I think like every three months or every month, actually. We should just like, um. Spend like, you know. Half a class or half a session, just to like, um, talk about like. How we feel we're doing. Um, and then. You know, like where we want to like change something. But I think like, if we keep this pace. My goal at least was, you know, somewhere around. Here, January ideally, I'd like to just be. Um. You know, pretty confident about. My system design, you know, um, with the idea that maybe like by. June, I know some people want to do faster. But like for me, like, I kind of feel like, you know, here it would be good, but. By June, for sure, like, um, if. If anything happened to me, cause like, this is what I was saying earlier, right? With all the companies laying off people. Like, I just want, my, my whole thing is like, I'm happy that I have a job, but like, I also kind of want to. You know, just always be sort of prepared. Um, for whatever, because layoffs and anything can happen anytime, so. If I'm actively studying, it doesn't matter, like, is, then, you know, like, I can get a job. Pretty quickly. And. You know, like, um. Sometimes like you can actually come out with something a little bit better, you know, right? Or a little bit better in pay or whatever, so. I just want to always have like that active, like. Studying and I feel like by June, you know, if. If nothing else, if something were to happen, right? Like I predict, this is what I always feel like, like every year that goes by, companies. Like within a year before, like one year happens, right? I'm just telling you from experience, like before people complete their year, that's when you see, you see the most layoffs. Which is dumb. But, like, if you are aware of that, then you won't be. Like severely impacted, so if I can get past that, then maybe they'll be great, you know, like I'll still be working at the company that I'm working at. But if not, then like at least I'd be prepared for, you know, some more interviews, so. And what I really mean to say here is that I'm not even thinking about, like, getting laid off, I don't care about that. I'm actually thinking about just being, um. Good enough to interview. Um, so that I don't miss any opportunities, you know, like a year from now or up to a year from now, if that makes sense. Um. And to kind of finish the thought, right, like, I have like a group of friends that I talk to sometimes. Um, and. Basically, like, the idea is that if you're. Prepared, right? And you're, you know, um, you're keeping track of your goals and stuff like that. Then essentially, like. You should always be interviewing, like, even if, like, you're working somewhere. You know, you should always just be interviewing because they're free chances to practice and check what do you know? Um, and so like, I think that's actually pretty cool, right? Like if you. Work somewhere, right? You guys are working on it, which is great, but like if you work, um. You know, like for Amazon, for example, right? But if you interview at like somewhere else and you just check to see. What is the culture like at that other company and what kind of questions do they ask? If they ask questions that you've read about or you've prepared for. Um, that will make you that much smarter at Amazon, right? And you wouldn't have to worry about layoffs, or that would make you much smarter at your current job. And so, you know, like, you can either like. Move up in your job or you can move up. Elsewhere, that's kind of how we see it, so it's, it's a good thing ultimately. If you just actively like, on top of it. So it's like free per, free pro. Um, so that, that's my goal, just like the full thing, right? Like, um. Like how I plan to study.
Yeah, makes sense, uh, but like, yeah, I think we should start, right? Um, we have probably eight thirty already.
Okay, cool, cool. Yeah, so I'm done talking, let's, um. Let's go ahead and start with chapter five, do you, do you want to take? Um, the reading, do you want to do the reading, Ramya?
Uh, sure, yeah.
Okay.
Good. So in the previous chapters, we were all dealing with the data stored on a single machine. Going forward, in the next part of the chapters, we'll be dealing with data which is stored on multiple machines. And we need data stored on multiple machines for various reasons. One is for scalability. Uh, and there are three parts to scalability, one is the data volume itself. For example, currently you are storing one, the five terabytes, suddenly it goes to fifty petabytes. You cannot store it on a single machine, so you have to go to multiple machine or buy a bigger machine. Second is the read load or the write load. Um, what they mean by read or write load is the throughput, like, let's say you are serving some X read requests per second. Now you have to serve thousand X read requests per second. Similarly for write, how do you handle that within a single machine and it's not possible? The second reason is fault tolerance or high availability. Here it's probably they're talking about single point of failure. If you have all data in a single node and that node goes down or the network to that node goes down, you might not be able to do any read or write operations and. Having multiple nodes have the same data helps us to guard us against fault, uh, guard us against any failures and provide high availability. The third is latency, this is like pretty common, like you all know, like. If somebody wants to access information, let's say Netflix, they want to watch a movie. Uh, somebody watching from India will be connected to the copy of movie data closer to the geographical location than somebody connecting from the US. Just to have a latency low, uh, we need to have data replicated across various geographical locations. One good example is Netflix movies. The next section talks about, so these three are the primary reasons why we are talking about distributed data scalability, high availability and latency. The next they are talking about what are the different techniques we can achieve these goals, scalability, latency or high availability? I mean, or basically what are the, I think the next page, they basically talk about scaling to a higher load, how we can achieve this? There are three different architectures or they talk about. Uh, one is the shared memory architecture. What the shared memory architecture is nothing but vertical scaling. Suppose today our data requirement, the change from five terabyte to ten terabyte. Probably buying a bigger machine, you would still be able to meet ten terabytes. So that is the shared memory architecture. Where you upgrade to a bigger machine. The downside of upgrading to a bigger machine is, um. You may need two X the memory, two X the network resources and everything, but the cost will not scale linearly, cost may be even higher. So that's what they talk about as disadvantage of vertical scaling or shared memory architecture. Somebody had a question.
Oh, yeah, I mean, one question there is, can, let's say, cost is not a factor, right? Can you, is there any other technical bottleneck that we will hit? Um. One I, one, I was thinking maybe, um, you know, the address space, right? The. But, um, the address. Um, space might be hard to accommodate in the bus, on the memory bus, uh, design. Um, with, uh, is that, um, you know, uh, after, after a certain point, right? With the memory bus can just cannot, um, maybe there are ways to. Uh, kind of index into, like, there are maybe techniques to kind of, uh, scale to a. Uh, higher memory even with that, you know, memory bus issues. But I think after that, it's going to be slower, uh, I mean, your latency will. Because you have such a big memory and you have only such a small address space and any optimization that you do on top will incur latency. Um. But, but like, uh, does that make sense or? Uh, what, what do you think, like, is there, like, if cost is not factor, then what else could be the problem with shared memory architecture, right?
Yeah, I think the book talks about it, they say there could be other bottlenecks too. Uh, it is not that if we twice, uh, if we get like twice, twice as many CPUs or RAMs. And this capacity, we, we will be able to serve twice the load, like you said, uh, the last line here, uh, says, right?
Yeah. There are bottlenecks. But what bottlenecks he didn't mention, that was a.
Your question, um.
He didn't answer that.
Yeah, that, also when we scale vertically, we cannot have like, uh. Let's say we went from one, one TB to ten TB, but can we go to thousand TB? That's a question, right? Do we have that kind of, uh, disk?
We don't, so.
It's not infinite.
Yeah.
What is the, what is exactly the, oh, the, what is the bottleneck? What is, where do we choke? Uh, is it the member address bus? Why not thousand TV, right? Like, um, I was thinking it's the bus architecture, our basically the architecture will, it's, it's just cannot scale, uh. Um, beyond a point. Uh, but, uh, yeah, I think that address space is a bottleneck, but what else could be the reason is?
Um, so in this, we are talking about like one disk, right? Uh, like one, one, one drive. So the other one is the shared nothing hack architecture in the next part where they talk about, you know, wiring multiples. CPUs wiring multiple, uh, disk to be operated under one operating system, so.
No, no, shared disk architecture is, uh, basically you have, uh, same, basically in the first one. Shared memory architecture is basically one machine, one machine, everything. Shared disk architecture is multiple, um, machines using the same disk.
So that's a. Some portion of the disk, the address space of the shared disk, it can be thousand petabytes, but each. Machine will use only so whatever it can afford, which the address memory bus offers, right? Or the memory I O offers. Let's say the address space allocated to the CPU can handle only three terabytes and then even if the.
Yeah.
It's like ten, each will use three, uh, depending on its capacity.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's what I'm saying. So the, the problem with the shared memory architecture, apart from the cost. Is that, um, the hardware, uh, just cannot support infinite scaling, disk scaling. So, um, the, you know, the bus I O will hit a problem. Uh, that's something that he didn't mention here, but I think that's what is the problem. The shared disk architecture is a complete term, is another, uh, is another approach. But yeah, that also has the same problem, you cannot just, uh, scale. I mean, limitless, I mean, unlimited in an unlimited fashion. Um, right, I mean. Yeah, it, it's just that you have multiple machines, so you kind of have. More independent CPUs and RAMs, so kind of gives you availability and advantage.
Yeah, even the shared disk architecture, availability is like. You are still, the data is on one disk, right? It's not truly shared, if that disk goes down or the connectivity to that disk or the I O to that disk is not working. And then it's not truly available, just the CPU part of it is available, you have many machines.
Yeah, yeah.
The same, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I was just. I think we're all on the same page here, so, um, want to continue, Ramya?
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
The shared nothing architecture, the shared memory architecture is what Amulya just described and shared discuss like we have. Multiple machines with their independent CPUs and RAMs sharing the same seat, same disk. Uh. But here, they are each of the, and they can address only certain sections of the disk. Given latency requirements or their addressing requirements. The next section brings us to the shared nothing architecture, which is truly horizontal scaling. In horizontal scaling, where the data is truly present across various machines in their own disks and we operate to, uh. In this, uh, distributed architecture. Um. So they say if the data is distributed across multiple nodes, we need to be aware of the constraints and trade offs that occur in such a distributed system. Database cannot magically hide this from you. The, I think they are hinting at the CAP theorem here. Uh, you can, the data, if you want a hundred per, uh, like, uh, consistency, availability and partition tolerance, right? Those are the constraints and trade offs we need to consider whenever we are encountering a distributed system. Um.
Right, um. And intuitively, we all know what these things are, right? You think of this as a bigger machine, this is more like network computing, right? Like multiple computers like in same workstation area. And then this is just really like. Um, multiple computers just spread out, you know, with their own independent. Structures, but. They're all duplicating. Some data, essentially.
Yeah.
So. Yeah, it says here too, you can distribute data across multiple geographic regions. You know, and then that will help reduce latency, pretty much like what you were saying, um, for Netflix, this is pretty much. Um, I think. Called, uh, horizontal scaling, which is what he said over here. So, this is the one that, uh, seems to be the most, um, popular today. You know, in modern times. So, okay.
Yeah.
Please continue.
Yeah, so the next couple of chapters, first one deals with replication and the second one deals with partitioning, right? What this really means in replication is all your data still fits into the, uh, memory of one or the disk of one machine. Just that you replicate this data across various nodes for, uh, uh, better, uh, read throughput or availability or reducing the latency. Partitioning means your data truly doesn't fit into the. Member, a disk of a single machine, so you have to partition the data, let's say it is twenty petabytes, you will not fit into one disk. In this case, you have to split the data across various nodes, so partitioning is also known as sharding. There is a picture eleven, uh, where what they say what is partitioning and what is, uh. Uh, yeah, here it is an example of partitioning. Uh, or sharding, here a single database is split across. Uh, two partitions, partition one and partition two, and each partition can have its replica. So replication and partitioning are two different concepts here.
Right.
On the same data, partitioning is like different data.
Yeah, so this starts with one index and ends at a certain range, and then this starts at another index and ends at another age. These are the partitions. And then these are the, the replications. This is just a copy of partition one and then partition two, copy of partition two.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, so we can start chapter five and it talks all about. Partition, I'm sorry, replication. So in this, we'll be dealing with data which fit in a single. System or a single node. And I'll just give a five, two minute overview of what the chapter is and then we'll go into the details. So this, uh, the motivation for replication is, uh, reducing the latency as we talked about, increase availability, increase read throughput. And how do we do replication? There are three algorithms described in this chapter. One is the single leader, the second one is the multiple leader and three is, the third is the leaderless. And across three, these three algorithms, the replication could be synchronous or asynchronous. Synchronous meaning the client does an operation of write and you will wait until all the replicas have finished getting the copy. Uh, and asynchronous means you can write to one or more nodes and you can just exit. So these two, so these are the various things they discuss in this chapter. What is the motivation for replication? Three algorithms and two, uh, subsections or two ways of doing replication. So the first page typically talks about that and then they talk about, uh. What are the problems with replication? what are the problems with replication lag? And how do we get ahead with the problems with replication lag and they talk about some consistency scenarios at the end of each section? With this background, I think we can jump into leaders and followers section in the next page, yeah. Okay, so here what they, this is what is called as the single leader configuration for replication. Um here, typically when you do a write, write goes through a leader. So there are leaders and followers or masters slaves, active and passive nodes, there are multiple names for this uh uh leader based replication. And the general philosophy is when you do a write, write always goes through one single node and that node is called as the leader node. In a distributed system, prior to a system is set up or just after the system is set up, there is a there is a leader election which can happen and leaders leader is the primary node. And if the leader goes down, typically another election process or something happens and the lead there is always one leader. And this leader election process is also pretty fast and so uh the clients might not know they are interacting with the new leader. So whenever a write happens, it goes to a leader node and the data gets updated and the data change is then sent to the followers. Typically in database systems, even if they call it synchronous, they write to only one follower or less number of followers and they exit. If there are thousand followers, they don't want it to wait until all the followers get the data, even during synchronous replication. So in practical systems, synchronous really means you write to one or more and then exit. In asynchronous replication, you just write to the leader node and you exit and without waiting for any of the followers to get the latest copy. During the
I think, I think
One go to the
Yeah, I mean, yeah. Yeah, I think uh here there's an important idea, right? So whenever um so I mean naively, you would think that there will be one leader and multiple followers and all followers are kind of similar, um you know, um monotonously similar, basically they all do the read only operations. But I think the idea that we can use in our application development is that um when you write, it always makes sense to also write to a follower apart from the leader because uh leader is the single point of failure. Um and if um if like something goes down before the data is replicated, now the data is kind of like forever gone. So it makes sense to kind of have uh synchronously write to a one follower. Um which is um I think that that's a great idea. I think we should we should take that. I mean, my takeaway was that like when I have to design something like this, um you know, that's something that we could uh apply or right away.
Yeah.
Yep, that's what I wanted to add, yeah.
Yeah, I think like, you know, there's one thing that we should probably like, I mean, I know we're going a little faster, but um should just probably like take down some of these points here too. Um data changes are sent as part of replication logs or change streams, so those logs are the ones that help the followers understand um what to copy from the leader. And then like some examples of um you know, these databases that um have replication built in would be post postgresql, MySQL, Oracle Data Guard and so on. So it's just, it's good to kind of be aware of these, like if you're asked what kind of databases provide these kind of replication out of the the box. So. Um. Let's keep going. I think we're here now.
Yeah, I think the picture, the previous page, the picture shows it quite well, all these points, right? So we make a write request to user one, two, three, configure new profile picture, it goes through a leader replica and internally what it happens is update user set picture, you are a new picture, where user ID. And the data goes through replication streams or the replication logs. Are the data change, whatever the data change format is, it pass it is passed to the other replicas. And yeah, this is what the leader based replication entire concept, how it works.
Right, and then simply put, right, if you think about it, what this person is doing is they're just updating um you know their picture, right? And so when you want to make an update, it goes to the leader. Um it doesn't go to a follower. Followers are meant to, you know, um copy the leader. And followers are meant to essentially provide like quick access to reads. Um so this is read only while this is read write. So here, when we want to make a read write action, we're doing it to the leader. That changes, you know, the um column picture URL, updates the old image with the new image. And this is being done on a user table for a primary key of one, two, three, four. So user one, two, three, four gets this update and then everybody else copies that later eventually. These might actually be slower in time to copy the leader. It may be depending on asynchronous or synchronous. But um eventually like all of them will have the updated data with this um model workflow. Okay.
Yeah, so the next section talks about synchronous and asynchronous replication. So let's look at figure five two, right? Um and they also say that uh between synchronous and asynchronous replication, often relational databases, this is a configurable setting. And in other systems, it is just hardcoded to one or the other. So users have a choice to configure it, most likely just configurable. So if you look at the figure five point two, right, if user, there are two followers. Whenever user makes a write, they write to leader one and then the leader one makes a data change to the follower one and user gets an acknowledgement. After follower one also has the data, so with respect to follower one, it is a synchronous replication. Because we wait until follower one gets the data. But when when we look at follower two, the data change happens, but the acknowledgement was given before and the data change and the acknowledgement for the leader comes after the leader has sent the acknowledgement for the user. So with respect to follower two, this is an asynchronous uh replication. Um. They also say that typically in system replication is quite fast. Most database systems apply changes to followers in less than a second. When followers, sometimes the followers fall behind the leader for various reasons, like the network connectivity can be bad or the follower can be serving another right read request for someone else or is just busy. Or the uh in that case, uh there will be a little more time and uh this is what I think they call about like uh consistency, right? The data will not be same at uh all the nodes at same point in time. Eventually, they will all catch up and indirectly they are referring to like uh all these problems, right? The node operating at a near capacity or network problems are the root causes which are the factors which contribute towards eventual consistency. Um. The advantage of synchronous replication is the follower always has the data which is consistent with the leader. How this helps, right? Uh if a leader fails, then we know there is at least some follower with the recent copy of the data and we can do this failover correctly. Um. And they also say it is impractical for all followers to be synchronous because this would bring our writes to be really slow.
Correct, yeah.
And this uh having some followers to be synchronous and others to be asynchronous, it is also called as a semi synchronous system. Yeah. Um. Then they talk about something called as durability. Weekend durability may sound like a bad trade off, but asynchronous replication is nevertheless widely used, especially if there are many followers or if they are geographically distributed. This is again intuitive for all of us saying like, yeah. Uh if we wait for the movie to be upload updated or some movie tag to be updated throughout the world, then the movie will largely be available for anybody to watch. So the idea is like uh yeah, I update in certain locations and the replication can happen asynchronously and uh availability or the movies of durability is adjusted in this way. Um.
I like that example of the movie. It's like, hey, this movie isn't out yet for your
Yeah.
For your geography or your location, but it's available elsewhere. And that could be because behind the scenes, they're waiting for it to finish. And then you get a notification internally.
Yeah.
And that updates the client.
Yeah.
All right.
Um. Here, there's a little blurb on what is the latest research on replication. Um I didn't read about chain replication, but they say it is a variant of synchronous replication and we can quickly maybe do a Google search on chain replication. And they say chain replication is the backbone of Microsoft Azure Storage.
Um I'll just pull some stuff together and we can look at this afterwards, after the facts.
Yeah.
Okay.
And they also say there's a strong connection between consistency of replication and consensus. Consistency means all values being the same at a given point in time. Consensus means getting notes to agree on a value. And they say they will explore more on consensus consensus and consistency in future chapters. Um, okay, now the point of how do we set up new followers? Let's say now we had ten followers and we have to set up five more followers or bringing up a Netflix service in a new geographic region, let's say uh South Africa, how do we go up with that, right? They don't want to do a file copy, simply copying data files from one node to another is typically not sufficient. Because clients are constantly writing to the database. Maybe in a movie case, there is no constant, right? But in, let's say a Wikipedia page, right, there is somebody always editing. Uh or there are frequented it's and there are clients writing to the database and the data is always in a flux. So standard file copy would see different parts of a database and different parts in a time. So let's say you copied first thousand blocks of the database and then you are copying the next thousand blocks. You will miss out the changes on the first thousand blocks. If you just copy it on a block by block on a file copy basis. So what they do here is they take snapshots. Snapshot is like um okay, uh they have a timestamp to which when they copy data. Take a consistent snapshot of the leader's database at some point in time. Uh and then they use this for replicating. And this is also the way people typically do the backups in databases, right? At every consist at like probably every half a day or every nightly they did data uh like a locker database or even without clocks, they take a snapshot. Snapshot is like what is the value at this point in time? Once we created the snapshot, we replicate that snapshot on the new follower node. And then the new follower node has this latest stamp uh timestamp and it can connect to the leader and say, I have data until this point in time. Now give me all the new data that happened after this point in time. This is what uh this is like a simple scheme to uh replicate data when there are new followers. Take a snapshot, then connect and get the replication uh log. Um. After that timestamp, basically whenever uh uh leader wants to replicate data, it creates a replication log. It's like what logs we learnt in the previous chapters, right? Whenever a write happens, we also have a write ahead log. We log always what we want to do. So whenever the node failure happens, we can use the log to uh bring back all the transactions. Any more, any questions or discussions on this part, on this leader set of follower setup?
It's a pretty good, I mean, you know, this is good to remember. Um. I think like the main point here is just really the logging, right, and the snapshots. So the snapshot needs to be up to date.
Yeah.
Um.
And I wonder how
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Um like so every write to the database, like if you have a large database and you have like um every write is is a new log sequence number.
You might be breaking up. I'm not sure if it's me.
Yeah, I don't know if you're U U I D spaces, okay? Uh yeah, maybe it's me. Um that's why my network is horrible. But I say, um can you hear me better now? Is it any better?
Yeah, yeah.
No, I was thinking, um so like if you have a high traffic database, right? Every right to any table is a is a basically a new sequence number. Um I was just thinking like it does like let's say you are using a U U I D or like some uh incremental counter, how does that scale? Um is is just a counter? Hmm is that enough for us to capture all rights? Um maybe uh that's a that's what I think the the question someone was asking in the WhatsApp group, right? That we need a non wrapping counter to kind of uniquely uh associate each right to a log number. Um, yeah, maybe uh that's a question that we can answer later. But yeah, um I would imagine that like these numbers tend to be get really big and like we might hit a um uh limit there where you know our right, the log numbers just wrap around.
Yeah, the sequence number, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um maybe good to like check that out later. If there's anything about it.
Here, we are still dealing with data which fits in a single uh machine, right? So we will should be able to find out offsets for our right from the beginning of a record. If the offset is too huge, then it also means that the data probably doesn't fit in a single machine. That's where party sharing or sharding comes up.
Hmm.
Uh intuitively for me, it is like, yeah, the data fits in a single machine, so you should be able to go to the byte offsets of your right.
Where does it say it is single machine? Why? What is it about single machine here? Uh that that's a question I had when you spoke for the replication. Replication doesn't mean that it has to be on a single machine, right? Um people have
That it so the uh what replication means is that data is along it's uh replicated along different machines, that's all. That means a single unit of data fits in one machine. Partitioning is another concept where the data itself is so huge that you cannot put in a single machine. Replication talks
Right, you could have, there there are two orthogonal uh issues, right? You could have replication and partitioning in a single database. Um in a single distributed database. So um so the question is, um if you're uh you should, uh I mean, how so you're you're you were saying that like we we should have a sequence number from the snapshot uh point, right? Um is that how it is done? So you take a snapshot and then you kind of um snapshots could be taken like uh could when so let's say you want to write, so this whole topic came because we want to copy the data over to a new follower, right?
Yeah.
So um maybe you write some application, some replication app that basically uh takes a snapshot um that kind of uniquely identifies a point in time in the database uh writes, right? Um how how does that anchor work? It should be a number, it should it should be a um log sequence number, like uh every right is assigned a log sequence number. And this snapshot is basically saying at this log sequence number, I want the copy to happen. Um so I I believe there should be a ID there too. And then, yeah, offsets are basically you um will tell you like up to what point you need to kind of call catch up. But I think uh even for snapshot, I think you need an anchor and that anchor is the ID.
Yeah, that's a snapshot ID uh and which is probably can be the actual timestamp itself, right? The logic, if you use timestamp, right, then there's a clock skew problem, right? Like if you if you say um this is my um Yeah, we can use logical timestamp, not actual uh uh and like physical clocks, right? In a distributed systems, we know that we cannot have uh synchronization as a problem. So either we can use logical timestamps or vector clocks, there are multiple clocking logical timestamp scheme. So each snapshot will have some
What is
Saying it was
What is the logical time? Logical, what is the logical times?
We'll go through that in future chapters. Logical timestamp simply says that it's an order
What is logical times?
Or it helps us to order the events. It's not a physical timestamp, like today it is now month, uh, Tuesday. Uh, let's say, uh, eight twenty eight Wednesday, July sixth, right? Which, this is a physical time. But logically we can say
Mm-hmm.
This happened after previous Wednesday or something like that. So in order, it puts some order to the events without actually using the physical time. That's the logical timestamp. And then I think we are going to read about logical timestamp in future chapters or, or we can quickly look it up now.
I mean, it's fine, but I, I, so yeah, my question is like, how are you going to uniquely identify the snapshot timestamps? You're saying we use some, uh, yeah, you see, you're saying we use some timestamp information. Let me, let me think more on that. It's kind of not in my head, but yeah. We can go ahead, uh, like I was just, is it just me or everybody else is clear? Uh, we can go ahead.
Logical timestamps are ordering of events, yeah.
Yeah, I was just gonna pull up.
Yeah, lambda timestamps and yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, let's use this time to just kind of do like small discussions, um, because it is eight thirty. And then we can um resume Friday and start with the other chapter. Um, so we talked about chain replication, Azure, and then, um data redundancy and then we're just talking about uh logical timestamps. So, um do we want to like talk about this a little bit more or talk about this or? Or just
Also look into how do we do this, um, ID generation that does not wrap around. Um, the timestamp does make sense. Uh, maybe we can just use the timestamp, but, um what is the problem if you just use a timestamp? So you need to, um
Timestamps are not synchronous, right? Like multiple machines, they're not on same time, so uh, physical timestamps are impossible in distributed system.
Correct. So now, no, but I don't need to, the distributed machine. So basically, what is this timestamp used for? To identify from what point do I need to catch up?
Yes.
Right? Uh, and catch up need not be running on multiple machines. That could just, it could be something that's running on the leader and, uh, and the leader knows. Um, okay, so this is a, this is the timestamp at which the snapshot one was taken. And all the followers need to be updated. So only and basically it of uh relays the um, the log uh entries from that point on. Um, it, I mean, there's no need for, uh, because it's a leader that is going to write to the followers. So and that, basically the leader can decide what to, you know, what changes that needs to propagate and clock skew problem there. So I guess, uh um, that, that could be enough and just catching up whatever right events that happen afterwards. So there's no ID that we need to track, just a timestamp is, um, is good enough for right logs.
Depends, right? Now, as you said, if, if you're going by that approach, right, then the leader has to keep track of how many followers are there and where is each follower at what point of time? If the follower has to come and ask the leader, hey, give me from this one, then we still need that timestamp or something to uniquely say. Okay, I have a snapshot till here. After this, I will need the data can. I think it's more of the second where the follower comes and asks.
Yeah, so the problem still remains, right?
Yeah, yeah. So that anchoring point could be a logical timestamp, not the physical timestamp. And anchoring coin could be maybe an event also. I have uh received events until like, okay, this update was my last event. And when the, when this, when did update happen here and give me all events after this latest update. So it can be event and combination of event and logical timestamps. Uh, event again can be something, I mean, we need some uh unique combination, even then again can something be, which is repeated or something like that, right? Yeah. So we will need to have, we'll need to probably identify something much more unique than that. In combination with some U I D, some logical timestamp plus an event, something like that. Yeah, most of the databases, they have a snapshot identifier and uh and the follower notes which snapshot ID it had used and it comes and says I have used to this snapshot ID. So, yeah. Hmm, yeah. I'll probably read more about the snapshot IDs and come back.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, let's do that. I think this is a very complicated topic, so maybe we should, um, do some outside research. Um, okay, cool. Um, we'll stop here and we'll go ahead and resume Friday with the system design. Alex Chu.
Yeah, what did we decide? Did I miss or something? I got disconnected.
Oh, so we're basically doing the calendar. So we'll be doing Wednesdays, this book. And then because we wanted to start this other book.
Yeah.
We'll do this on Fridays. So, um, it'd be good to read chapter one.
Yeah, hey, read the first three chapters.
Okay, read the first three chapters before Friday. Kidding. Um, but yeah, that's the plan.
No, I think, read the first three chapters, they're small and they'll, yeah. Uh, we can both go over if it is stressful, uh, we can decide on Friday. If, if anyone is not ready up, then we can go over it.
Yeah, yeah, well, I just want to give, um, enough time for everything so people are not like too overwhelmed. Um, because people, some people are still in vacation mode too, so just work up to it. Um, so yeah, we'll do this book. We're, we're getting through chapter five, that's good. And so we'll do Alex Chu's stuff, um, chapter one and maybe possibly the other chapters if you have more time. And then, um, we'll go through these again next week and so on. As always, I'll, I'll put this up on, um, YouTube and then like I'll share the links, um, that we talked about today. And, um, looking forward to your notions, updates, Amalia.
Yeah, um, yeah, I will, I think I put the sections in the thing, uh, we, I will update it to what we finish today. And, um, um, and yeah, I will update what we hope to finish next time. Yeah. For this one, I don't know about this one. Yeah. Um, okay, yeah, that's a kind of bar raising. Um, I will, I will attempt, but yeah, it might be hard, uh. But yeah, I think, well, from starting, I think whatever is, uh, whatever we could not do, we'll just leave, but yeah, from this chapter, um, I will try to do it more diligently, yeah.
Okay, all right. See you all then. Good start today. Bye.
Yeah, bye.
Bye.